Thank you for coming to the Roseburg School District Board meeting. Is Mayor Larry Rich here? There he is. Hi, come on up. I was looking for you and I didn't see you. Okay, please. Is it button on?
Testing, testing. There you go. Hello, everybody. My name is Larry Rich, Roseburg Mayor. And I have to tell you personally, it's fun to be back to see so many faces that I knew from years ago. So hello, and thank you for inviting me. The reason I'm here is because it's School Board Recognition Month. And so we want to take a few moments of your time to look at our school board members and show our appreciation and tell them thank you for their service. You probably already know they do not get paid, and you probably aren't aware, they spend many, many meetings outside even school board meetings. They have other meetings they have to attend, so it's a huge commitment on their part. And we want to say thank you to each of the school board members for the service you do. So on behalf of the City of Roseburg, thank you very much. I have this proclamation, so I'm going to read it and then, and I will present it to you. School Board Recognition Month. Whereas the community of Roseburg relies on public education to ensure a prosperous, prosperous quality of life and strong economic health for Roseburg. And whereas locally elected boards fulfill leadership roles and serve as the conduit through which teachers, parents, businesses, and communities demonstrate the care, creativity, and support that lead to student achievement. And whereas public schools nurture and train diverse student populations to the best of their ability, whatever the resources, to give students the knowledge, the skills, and opportunities they need to succeed. And whereas board members build the framework that makes it possible for education organizations to teach Oregon's children. And whereas the commitment of men and women who serve on the Roseburg School Board deserve recognition and thanks for their dedication to the education needs of the students of Roseburg. Now therefore, I, Larry Rich, Mayor of the City of Roseburg, to hereby proclaim January 2025 to be School Board Recognition Month. And how about a nice round of applause to our school board members? Where would you like us to meet?
We'd like to thank Principal Hughes and his staff for welcoming us here this evening. And now we have the wonderful honor of saying our pledge of allegiance. Director Kornitz will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, few housekeeping things. First of all, please mute your phones. And do we have any members of the media here to, that we'd like to introduce themselves? Okay. If you are wanting to speak publicly during public participation, please fill out a card on the table back there, and that way we will be ready for you. Anyone that speaks at the podium or at your desk, your chair, please remember to turn your microphone on and turn it off when you're completed. And now we have Principal Jacob Hughes. We look forward to his report.
All right. Thank you for joining us today at Eastwood Elementary. We're excited to give you a small glimpse into some of the inner workings of our school. Now, before I get too far into what makes Eastwood great, I need to thank some folks. I would like to formally thank the school board for this opportunity. Our strategic plan is a key component to the why behind tonight's presentation. Next, I'd like to thank Matt Hill, Stephanie Taylor, Dora Rabi, and others that ensured we'd be able to hold this meeting in here tonight, setting up, getting things ready to go. Ms. Kaylee Redicop and Ms. Tammy Averett and all the others who helped with the artwork that's displayed here in the back and getting the gymnasium ready to go. Here at Eastwood, we're an academic institution. We don't take that responsibility lightly. In a moment, I'll share some of the specifics around our academic achievements and goals for improving in three specific categories. But first, I want to make sure we're honoring the great things that are happening at Eastwood daily, weekly, and monthly. These items are not connected to an end of the year assessment, but are critical to the environment and culture of our school. First, dedicated staff. Without our people that are showing up every day to work with our students, nothing is possible. Relationship-driven, our staff is very like-minded when it comes to serving students. We want students to feel connected to the school and view it as their school. Our staff understands that we must build relationship with students and families for this to happen. Some specifics on this would be our Monday morning message. This gets played every Monday in classrooms. It's also shared out to families. In the video, I share some of what is to come for the week, highlight some successes around campus, including our weekly school-wide attendance percentage for the week, identify students that have gone above and beyond, as well as have our CDS talk about some social, emotional awareness items. We have a student store. We call it the hatchery store. Fish are very important to us here on this campus. The hatchery allows us, we have a fish hatchery that allows us to release fish, and we also get a chance to feed them. We have gardening opportunities. We are connected with the Umpqua Valley Farm-to-School Organization. We are harvesting some of our own crops. We're getting our hands dirty with the learning and giving students options to do some food sampling as well. Our nature trail is open to our students and staff during school hours. We have an outdoor classroom area. We have a historical structure called the Plank House, currently working with some outside stakeholders to improve our fields and make them game-ready. Our Booster Club. Eastwood has a very supportive and engaging group. They try to offer at least one opportunity a month for families to come to campus and enjoy and gather, and all of these items are free. For example, we have a movie night, trunk-or-treat, Winter Fest, and more. The Booster Club gives money every year to teachers for supplies to start the year. They host meals during conferences, ensure Teacher Appreciation Week is a blast, and they buy a book for every student to take home during winter break. They also support big projects like our track and our reader board out front. To make sure everyone gets out of here at a decent hour, I'll stop with all the offerings that are currently in place here at Eastwood. Now, I'll transition to some of our goals that we have in place for this school year. I will start with the vision that we share here for students. Eastwood will promote a culture of continuous and daily learning. Students will have access to an education that's visible and adaptable to meet the needs of all learners. That vision is something that I'm passionate about, our staff's passionate about, and just reading it makes me very proud. The next slide will show our data in ELA math and attendance. This data is from last year. This data is from the Oregon Statewide Assessment System. ELA and math assessments is for all students, grade three through five, and the attendance is for all students at Eastwood. You can see the data listed there. Next slide. This next slide will show our goals for the same three areas by the end of the school year. We have set an aggressive goal of 10% growth in all three areas. You can see on these slides that there's some things in place that we're implementing currently. In literacy, we have systematic data-driven instruction and support. We are hosting core review meetings. We have small group and interventions that are observed and progress monitored. Our title teacher, Ms. Wicks, is leading these data review meetings. We have professional learning that's led by myself and other leaders in the school. To me, this is an example of shared efficacy. For math, we're hosting Math Studio. We're bringing in visitors. We're bringing in people from the outside to give us feedback specific to building goals and formative assessment. Our teachers are opening our classrooms and we're welcoming that feedback. Professional learning is linked to the habits of mind and interaction best practices. Professional learning is led by myself and other math leaders. Our title teacher is also doing data review meetings in this area as well. And finally, for attendance, our path to graduation. We have a group that meets every six weeks. We're identifying students that need targeted interventions. We might have an empathy interview where we sit down and do goal-setting with the student. We may have a daily check-in along with some other things specific to what that student needs. There's individual and class prizes for weekly attendance. We also have an end-of-the-year field trip to In-N-Out that's tied to improved attendance. It's a big hit here. Last slide, the last slide, excuse me. In summary, Eastwood is a school that is working very hard to connect with students and grow them not only academically, but socially, emotionally as well. We set rigorous goals for academic success and have plans in place to achieve them. Now, I cannot guarantee that we will meet these goals, but I can assure you that we will be excellent in the pursuit of them. My expectation is that we, as a school community, will persevere in the presence of obstacles, and to me, that is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Principal Hughes. This is definitely a unique school with so many learning experiences from hiking and fish hatchery and day camp and with the Indian heritage that we have here. It's really unique. Do we have any questions from directors? Thank you very much. We love your school. And now we have esteemed guests here, Spencer Bingham and Ryan Wilson, to present our RHS Student Leadership Report. Take it away, guys.
Right there. Okay, perfect. So as we return from a good winter break, we've all begun to prepare for finals in the coming year. There's so many good things left to happen this semester. This week, the week before winter break on campus was our winter week, a celebration packed with dress-up days, activities, scavenger hunts, and plenty of fun to end the semester. In collaboration with the behavior team, we're excited to announce the return of Pride shout-outs to RHS for 2025. Students and staff can share a positive message and shout-outs with anyone on campus, spreading encouragement and recognition throughout our community. This week, we've also been busy selling tickets for our first winter dance that's happening this Saturday night. Beyond the winter activities, we're gathering up for the Art Assembly, Art Recognition and Talent. Auditions are open to everyone on campus, and it will be held in two weeks.
Our sports teams were all busy over the break with practices, tournaments, and competition. One highlight, our boys' basketball team winning their game against Milwaukee at the Abbeys Holiday Classic in Medford. Yesterday, our boys' basketball team played against North Eugene at home. Our wrestling team is probably warming up right now. They are hosting a wrestling competition that starts at 7:00 PM. Also, if you're interested in bumming, this Friday, our girls' team is playing at home, uh, girls' basketball team, excuse me, playing at home against Willamette, and our student section will be in neon. The bowling team, who won state last year, by the way, is competing next Sunday at the Medford Lava Lanes. There are over 20 students competing for our bowling team this year. Our swimmers are also busy this week. Three meets, a duel against South Medford and two home meets on Friday and Saturday. This Saturday, they are hosting an invite with teams from all across the state. Our spring sports are already prepping with preseason practices. And finally, men's lacrosse began yesterday.
Finals are also coming up. We have less than two weeks left in the semester, and so the students have been prepping their second semester schedules during advisory class. Also, in advisory, anyone on campus can submit a grade check to be entered into a weekly drawing to win a gift card. Our grad coaches have started hosting extended learning opportunities after school every Tuesday and Thursday. And this week, the UCC term is starting, and many of our students are taking dual enrollment courses.
Thank you so much for your time. See you next semester.
Thank you very much. So I do have, I do have a question, and there may be other questions, too. I mean, you on the leadership team, you guys are very busy. I'm sure you do well academically, but I'm just curious what kind of sports and other extracurricular activities you guys are involved in. I think it would be good to say, hey.
Yeah, so um, I, I guess just barely last time me and, or it's the last time I was here, I was with Sylvia. I just barely got all of college applications submitted, so that's super cool. I'm involved in a bunch of the clubs, because I think that's one thing that's super cool about our, our school is that we have a lot of clubs to offer. So I'm in Link Crew, and so that is kind of helping integrate the freshmen. We're planning, FBLA is starting up for regional, state, and the nationals, hopefully. FBLA, so Future Business Leaders of America, and so it's a competition-based program. I played football this year, and then I might play track also. And then, let's see, yeah, leadership and try to stay as busy as we can.
What about you, Ryan?
Personally, my only sports are track and cross country, so I like to run. And then in years past, I've been a part of the concert choir at the high school, and I've done a couple plays as well. So I love the arts, and I love to run. That's about it for me.
Great. Thank you so much. I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I think you guys as leaders can handle it.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
And we do have another question.
Just wondering on that Pride shout-out, shout-outs, that's something new to us. Can you, can you kind of tell us a little bit how that works? You just go to anyone and say, yeah, you were awesome today.
Yeah, um, so it's actually something we, the leadership class is kind of organized and started this week. So around the whole campus in classrooms, and I think just in kind of centralized areas, there's these little, you know, clear folders with slips. And so anyone who wants, you know, it can be about staff or fellow students can kind of just write about, you know, someone, someone they acknowledge, a teacher or staff that's, that's made an impact or demonstrated the pride attributes. And then they're read off, and I think we're also going to try to, you know, feature some of them in videos. There's a little checkbox where you can say, you know, if you want it to be anonymous or not, but we'll read them in the announcements occasionally or, you know, just kind of to help people feel validated and seen throughout the campus.
Yeah, I think that's a, you know, that's an awesome idea. The other question I had was the ART Assembly, Arts Recognition and Talent. Can you tell me, you know, what that involves?
Yeah, so typically, I think it was kind of more of like, you know, what you would think of an art, you know, a bunch of music. But we felt like that kind of left a couple people hanging, so that's why we kind of, you know, switched it a little bit. So, I mean, almost view as a talent show. I think I actually might be doing like a swing dancing routine. So it's just everybody. There's, we have someone in leadership. She's a D1 gymnast. And it just kind of, everyone that, and there's so many people with incredible talents at the school, and we just kind of wanted to give them a platform to showcase that. So, I mean, it's, it's Roseburg's Got Talent, basically.
Well, can you make sure that we can maybe attend that?
Yeah, so, so that's something else is, it's not just for Roseburg. I think it's open up so that if people would like to come watch it, it's something I think is available to, to the community.
Sure, and send us an invite on that.
We will.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, gentlemen. It's been a pleasure. And now we have more incredible students that we're going to celebrate. And we have Director Shortcliff, who will be doing the student recognition.
All right, we are going to recognize some amazing students here tonight. First off, from Jolene Middle School from seventh grade, we have Connor Berlia. Come on up, Connor, and anybody from Jolene? Teachers, perhaps? Come up here, man. Congratulations. Here's your speech I'm about to give. All right, Connor is an outstanding student and an even better individual. He has demonstrated consistent effort and mastery throughout the year, excelling in his studies, participation, and teamwork. Teachers describe Connor as very responsible, kind, and helpful. He often goes above and beyond by helping his classmates understand the material, offering assistance, and even reteaching when necessary. In math, Connor's tenacious desire for excitement and learning, excitement for learning, and his continual press for deeper understanding make the classroom a better place. In woodworking, Connor is a very willing learner who is super focused and asks questions to deepen his understanding. Reliable and a great example to other students, Connor manages his time well, makes an effort to do quality work, and takes feedback to improve his pieces. Teachers agree, Connor is a pleasure to have in class and an asset to Jolene. Congratulations, Connor. And next, from Eastwood Elementary School in the fifth grade, Suzaya Bates. Get fun in there. Congratulations. Everybody's family, come on up. Everybody from Eastwood.
You're the center of attention. Family right here in front. Dad right there in front. There you go. There you go.
All right, now we got it. Now everybody's coming up. Perfect. Get on in here. Suzaya, Eastwood's fifth grade team chose to nominate Suzaya Bates for Student of the Month because she is an all-around amazing human being. Suzaya can be depended on whether she needs to do academic work or positively contribute to making Eastwood a better place. She is a quiet wallflower who observes people around her and isn't afraid to step in when they need a hand. Along with all this, Suzaya is someone who her peers can look to as a role model and a friend. Teachers know from these character traits that Suzaya has a bright and wonderful future ahead of her. Any middle or high school teacher would be lucky to have her in their class. Congratulations, Suzaya. Next up, from Roseburg High School, in the 11th grade, Ava Ash. All right, here we go. Ava is an exceptional student whose diligence, kindness, and perseverance set her apart. Despite facing challenges, Ava always demonstrates responsibility and consistently produces high-quality work. Asks insightful questions and enriches class discussions with her thoughtful contributions. She treats everyone with kindness and respect, making her a valued member of the classroom community. Her sincere and positivity create an atmosphere of warmth, and her resilience in overcoming obstacles is truly inspiring. Ava also goes above and beyond expectations, often researching topics further and sharing her findings to enhance class learning. Her dedication to academic excellence, combined with her remarkable character, makes Ava a joy to teach and a role model for others. Congratulations, Ava. Next up also from Roseburg High School, thanks for staying up, in the 12th grade, we have Ava Park. Ava exemplifies excellence in academics, leadership, and character. As a junior last year, she thrived in honors biology, earning dual credit through Southern Oregon University while demonstrating dedication and intellectual curiosity. Her passion for literature shown in Writing 121 and 122, where she impressed with insightful writing and even won her class's sonnet competition. Ava's leadership extended beyond academics. She co-founded the Asian American and Pacific Islander Club, fostering cultural awareness and inclusivity. A committed volunteer and National Honor Society member, Ava balances academics with caregiving for her younger siblings and excels in AP and CC courses. Her work as a paid ECE practicum student highlights her professionalism, reliability, and ambition as she pursues her CDA credential for advanced early childhood education opportunities. Ava's passion for social justice and advocacy for fairness make her an inspiring presence, and her kindness, initiative, and drive ensure she leaves a lasting impact on her school and community. Congratulations, Ava. And we do have one more, but he's not here. Are we going to announce? Are we going to save this one for next week?
And now we are going to celebrate a couple of teachers. First, we have Tammy Averett, librarian. The more, the more the merrier. Come on up. Oh, yeah. And we love, we saw your library. It's so warm and welcoming. Very nice. So Tammy is an indispensable part of the school community and plays a vital role in the daily operations at Eastwood. She is far more than just a librarian. Tammy has created such a welcoming place in the library where students feel like they belong. Her positivity, work ethic, and dedication shine through in everything she does. Her efforts and dedication are evident every day as she works to make sure students and teachers receive what they need when they need it. Tammy has a student-first approach. She is always ready to help, whether it's troubleshooting tech issues with Chromebooks, setting ambitious fundraising goals with the Eastwood Book Fair, or volunteering for student activities. Tammy's diligence and joyful nature are nothing short of inspiring. And her crystal apple says, inspiring Eastwood students inside and outside of the library. Congratulations, Tammy. Yeah, Eastwood, Eastwood folks, you may want to stay up here. Save you a few steps. Save you a few steps. So this is Jan Boiter, second-grade teacher. For twenty years, Jan has been a positive force in shaping the lives of Eastwood students. Her exceptional knowledge of school, students, and content is matched only by her dedication. If you visit Eastwood after school on weekends or even on holidays, you're likely to see Jan's car in the parking lot. Her commitment to her profession and students is unwavering. Jan takes immense pride in fostering the growth of every student in her classroom, focusing not only on the academic achievement but also on developing social and emotional skills. She is dedicated to nurturing the whole child. Eastwood means a lot to the whole Boiter family. Both of her sons attended Eastwood, where they completed their Eagle Scouts projects with support from community members. Hayden designed and installed the Bunny Hop Trail Footbridge. Is Hayden here? Okay. The footbridge, while Curtis, this is, hi Curtis. Thank you. Curtis built the original garden boxes and fencing. Jan and her family's enduring impact on Eastwood will be treasured for years to come. And her crystal apple says, twenty years of dedication, family, school, and community. Congratulations, Jan. Just one moment, can we have all the award winners come up? Can you bring your award and come forward? We're gonna have a group photograph. The crystal apple winners and our students and our board members. Thank you so very much. We are going to take a quick little break, and then we'll come back and have the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
We will resume in a few minutes, just giving you a little warning. Okay, we are calling this meeting back to reorder. And do we have any public participation for tonight? Is there anyone online? Okay, and it does appear that we have Mr. Director Hammerson was able, is that you, sir? Okay. We see you. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Corden for the review of the agenda and communication to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to be here tonight. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Yep, one communication there. Thank you, Director Hammerson. He actually is at a family event tonight, supporting his family and also joining us via Zoom, so we appreciate that. In terms of the review of the agenda, there are two items to bring your attention. We did have a crystal apple nominee in our Nutrition Services. That's been postponed until March 12th, so that name will come up March 12th at our business meeting. And then we have added an action item, number four. You'll see it on your agenda. This is Phoenix Charter Schools requesting our board to agree to modify the statutory notification deadline for submitting the request for charter renewal with Roseburg Public Schools. That is a new item, item number four, to be noted on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Corden. We now are moving on to the consent agenda. It is in your packet. You've had a chance to review that as well. I do wanna give a special thanks to Little John Financial Services and Katie Barnett for their added support to our district. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I so move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. I saw him. I saw him. He was like this. Yeah, okay, great. And now we are going to swear in new budget committee, a new budget committee member, which is Mr. Mike Schofield. And do we have renewing members, Mickey Hall and Tom Nelson here? Because they will be sworn in as renewing members.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Tom Nelson and Mike Schofield. We'll do these one by one here. Mickey Hall couldn't join us tonight. But anytime there's an opportunity to raise your hand to the square and be sworn into a public office is a pretty big deal. County did this recently. And I think it's, we should remember the importance of our, of our constitutional duties, which are part of the oath here, and also the importance of swearing someone in to help support our democracy and our schools. So we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Tom Nelson. Wanna come over here real quick and raise your right arm to the square, if you will, and just repeat after me, come join me over here. I, Tom Nelson.
I, Tom Nelson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of Roseburg Public Schools.
And the policies of Roseburg Public Schools.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities of the office to the best of my ability.
Discharge the responsibilities of the office to the best of my ability.
By the authority, so you're good there, thank you. So by the authority vested in me, as the clerk of Douglas County, District Number Four, I hereby declare you, Tom Nelson, duly sworn, duly elected, and eligible to serve as a member of the Roseburg Public Schools Board of Education Budget Committee. Congratulations, Tom Nelson. Again, Tom, thank you. All right, Mike Schofield, thank you. Please repeat after me, Michael.
I, Michael Schofield.
Just Mike.
Okay, let's do this again. I, that's true, that would be interesting with your center. I, Mike Schofield.
I, Mike Schofield.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of Roseburg Public Schools.
And the policies of the Roseburg Public Schools.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities of the office to the best of my ability.
Discharge the responsibilities of the office to the best of my ability.
Thank you. By the authority vested in me as the clerk of Douglas County, School District Number Four, I hereby declare you, Mike Schofield, duly sworn, duly elected, and eligible to serve as a member of the Roseburg Public Schools Board of Education Budget Committee. Congratulations, Mike.
We thank you, gentlemen, for volunteering your services, your time, and your expertise to our budget committee. And now we are moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, 2025 Budget Calendar. In preparation for the 25-26 Budget Committee meetings, our business operations staff have prepared a draft 2025 budget calendar for our consideration. The proposed calendar lists the first Budget Committee meeting as April 16th, 2025, and additional meetings on May 7th, and then May 8th through the 21st to be scheduled if needed. The budget hearing and adoption are proposed for June 11th, 2025, in time for the July 15th deadline to file Form ED 50 to the Douglas County Assessors Office in accordance with the Oregon Budget Law. So I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed 2025 Budget Calendar as presented.
I move for the approval of the 2025 Budget Calendar.
Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any questions? Any discussion? Okay, great, all those in favor? All opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hammerson. Motion carries. And then we have Item Number Four, Late Addition, for the Phoenix Charter School Request for Adjustment to Statutory Timeline for Contract Renewal Submission. Phoenix Charter Schools Acting Director and Board missed the deadline for submission of their request for RPS to consider renewal of their contract with the district, even though it was communicated to us on December 11th that a letter was awaiting signature of their board chair. Oregon statute requires requests for renewal to be submitted to sponsoring districts no later than 180 days prior to expiration of the final year of the contract, which would be January 2nd of 2025. Yesterday afternoon, January 7th, we received their electronic request for adjustment along with the request for renewal letter, both dated January 8th, 2025. According to OSBA, the Oregon School Board Association, for those who are not aware, both the Charter Board and the sponsoring district board, RPS, would now need to agree to an adjustment of the statutory timeline or the contract effectively ends at the conclusion of the current contract, June 30th, 2025. If the RPS Board is amenable to allowing this adjustment, we would then continue forward with our contract renewal process as outlined by Kristen Miles from OSBA, who would audit Phoenix Charter for our board. I would now entertain a motion to agree to an amended timeline so that a thorough academic, operational, and financial review of Phoenix Charter School can be completed by Kristen Miles from OSBA. Okay, we do not have a motion.
For discussion purposes, I would make a motion to enter into agreement to continue the deadline. But it is something I think we should seriously consider, and we may need more time to think about that, but I'll put the motion before the board.
Keith, is your motion the same as what was read? Or are you making it a little different?
No, I'm just making an editorial comment at the end.
Okay, so this is not a formal motion?
No, I made a motion to enter into an agreement to extend the deadline.
Okay.
Then I also said, we, period. We need to give it serious consideration. We may want to continue discussion on this, or the motion may not even receive a second.
So the question is, is there a second to his motion?
I got it.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any discussion?
I'll go first. I think deadlines are important. I think teachers set deadlines for students to turn in assignments. I think the IRS sets deadlines for us to turn in our taxes. And there was plenty of notice given. There was reminders sent. And I don't feel it is our responsibility or in our best interest to grant this extension on something that has already passed. So that's my two cents.
Do we have any other comments?
I would have preferred to have a few more days to to look into this. That we have a motion on the floor, so that's what we're going to vote upon. Let's talk strictly facts. For the past few years, this board and former boards have been bombarded when we've had somebody from Phoenix come speak about the contract. Got to follow the contract. Got to follow the contract. And the last person that came, well, a couple times ago, no longer with Phoenix. It was either seven or eight times that he threw in our face. You got to follow the contract. Well, this is facts. The contract wasn't followed. The date wasn't followed. And I remember a communication way back, like the 13th of December, that it was ready to go, it just needed to be signed. So once again, the board is made out to be the bad person. It's not our fault. They didn't do it. And, and I think the Executive Board of Charter, Phoenix ought to be here tonight. I know. I think the board ought to be here tonight. That means all of them. You've put us in a really rough situation. And so I'm going to vote no, just because it's the facts. The fact is, you didn't follow the contract. Now, I want to go on record stating that this is kind of a one-off. This is, don't take my vote tonight on how it's going to end up when the renewal comes to the board to vote. We have, there's a lot of work to be done. You know, we've got this coming. It's going to be very intense. You're aware of that. And after we get all the information, all the facts, then a decision will be made. It's not going to be made on emotions or anything like that. It's going to be based on facts. And I can count at least 10 times facts and things that have just been, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing for this board and how we've been created. And this is just really a poor, poor, poor thing. I understand mistakes happen. Get it. But everybody knew this was coming down the pipe. And we're put in a position that's just it's not good. And I think the Phoenix Executive Board ought to look into that, say, you know, this is what happened. We need to be more involved. But I'm going to vote no, just because the facts do not encourage me to vote yes.
Do any other directors have any comments?
Yeah, for the extension time, I'm going to say yes. But based on everything I know, when we come to, unless something happens, which I have no idea how it could happen, but you never know what could happen in the next, I don't know, month or two months, whatever it takes. But I'm just thinking about the students and the poor job Phoenix has done. The numbers, the statistics tell, they don't lie. And they've done a terrible job. And, and so when it comes down to it, unless something, you know, we'll give them a little bit more time, from my perspective. But I'm going to say, I'm going to say, let's end the contract unless I really hear something that turns my vote around.
Director Leone. Director Krimmets.
Yeah, this is something that, you know, we've we've wrestled with, it seems like, for a while. And you know, Director Cotton has been on the board for a long time. And Andrew and I have been on almost four years. And this was one of the premier discussions even at that time. And, and we, we wanted to see for ourselves. We visited Phoenix. And it's a great facility. I mean, we've just toured all of our schools here, and you have great potential there, great facility. And we just were, have been disappointed in the outcomes. And, and we looked at the kids, and they're the same as our kids. And, you know, I mean, we, we have kids that definitely struggle and have hard situations. And so we do take that into consideration, and we do understand that. And our hearts are for the students to, but we know that if they are uneducated, that's going to be their life. That's it for them. They can't go any further. So we value that so much. So it was surprising that, I know you, you, our heartstrings are attached. And, and those have been pulled on every time the executive director has talked. But at the same time, we, we have responsibilities, and it just seemed like in this important area of just renewing, applying for renewal of the contract, it didn't, it didn't happen. And, and that just says something to us, again. So I'm sorry, but, you know, at this point, I just am going to, my vote will be a no. And I, you know, I really wish that it was different. But that's where I stand at this.
Director Hammerson, are you, are you wanting to speak? Are you able to speak? I can't hear you. Just one moment.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry, I was trying to get to a place where there wasn't a bunch of kids screaming. I just, I just wanted to make a quick comment that it seems like the board members that have been on the board for some time kind of have some fatigue with the situation. But I would be a yes on this. Because I want to give it one last shot to see how the cards lay. You know, we're newer. I get it. The people that are leaning towards yes. I think, you know, we want to see this thing through. So, yeah, I'd be a yes on this.
Thank you for your comments. I too have comments, and to me, it was just one more sign of what we've been dealing with for the last number of years. I did, as a new board member, go back and watch all of the presentations by Phoenix so that I would be well aware of what was going on. And from back then to today, I see no difference at all, nor in the test scores. My disappointment, honestly, is with the Board of Directors because I don't know that they were really invested and aware of what was going on. But out of grace, I would say yes to extending it. Just to, you know, give it one more chance. But I honestly am not real optimistic. I agree with all of my, all of the directors up here. And so I would, I would say to continue it. That would be my vote. So we do have a motion to extend the agreement.
It's been the deadline for the submission.
The deadline, thank you. The deadline for the submission. So do I have a second? The mic was a second? So all in favor of extending the deadline? One, two, three, four. So we have four, all opposed. One, two, three, motion carries. Thank you for your comments, your, all of our notes and dissenting votes will be noted.
Madam Chair, this is not an approval of the contract. This is an approval of the contract process. And the outcome of the contract will be based on the merits of the application. And so there's another step to go.
Absolutely, correctly. That's true. Now we're moving on to item number five, Committee Reports, Curriculum and Instruction. CNI Committee Chair, Director Krimmets, will you please share?
Yeah, I'm going to turn that mainly over to Dr. Weber. We, we did meet on the 18th of December, and we're in the middle of the process piloting some of our we're not yet there, but we're getting ready to pilot our curriculum choices for the ELA and for health. ELA for English Language Arts for our elementary age, and then the Health for middle school and high school. So there was a lot of discussion, and Jill's going to share, Dr. Weber's going to share a little bit more of what we went through in really breaking it down for us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ann. We are at the committee meeting. We talked about the pilot of the two programs we're looking at. We also talked about social and emotional learning, and we talked about one other thing, preschool programs. So the pilot is something that the Curriculum and Instruction Committee is very invested in and wants to follow along. So we've been spending time just continuing to keep them updated on the process. And we are currently at three programs that we're looking at for the K5. And within the middle school and high school, we are looking at the health curriculum, both of them aligned to our position papers that we've written as a district. So we're still in the process of doing that, and it does take an entire year. So we'll keep updating the committee and continue to work through that process. We do have teachers and administrators involved in the process as well. So in the area of social and emotional learning, we talked about the programs that we use for direct instruction, which includes Second Step at the K8 levels and School Connect at the high school level. And we had a great discussion around the purpose of social and emotional learning to help teach character development for students and the process of doing that. So we want to ensure that our students meet the goals that you set for them, and the importance of that successful future includes those social skills and emotional skills for our students. And then we spent a little bit of time talking about preschools, and that was, Mr. Leone asked some questions about that. So we we brought some information around our preschools. And we have programs in our district that are funded by local partnerships, some federal funds and some general funds. And our community really is involved with our preschools, and we have a waitlist because we have so many families that are involved in that. But it supports our four-year-olds and our half-days, four days a week. So we're very proud of those programs and see some success from that.
And yeah, the preschool was quite a bit of discussion. I mean, we are also on board with that and being able to provide that. And we're hoping that that can continue, that we can really serve our community in that way. But we'll keep you updated on that and see how, how the budget, state budget, and how we're able to do that. But it's definitely very much on our heart to start them young in that early exposure will really kick a great start for them, a springboard for them to begin. And I just appreciate what the cabinet has been working on so hard, and, and we hope as a board that we'll be behind you all the way on supporting that. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. And now we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What's up here? All right, I have a moderately short report tonight for you. I want to start with something that's been addressed tonight, but it really is worth discussing again. I know our board members, you kind of put your heads down and go, no, we're good. We love to serve. But but it is great that January set aside to pause and thank school boards to recognize them for the service that they provide. I want to personally say I am so thankful for each of you. If the community doesn't know this, or patrons here, it is not uncommon, so two points here, to spend 10, 15 hours a week together with board members. They, many of them are working, they have jobs, they have other pressures in family and life, and it is a volunteer position. And I say this often, but people in public service are really community heroes, in my opinion. Now, it was said, I think Mayor Rich mentioned this, that board members aren't paid. Actually, the legislature provides a way for board members to get paid. I think it's important for you to realize that on our board, no one has decided that they would use public funds and get paid. It's just another indication of the service you provide. So thank you very much. I just want to give you another round of applause. Please join me in the crowd if you want to, thanking our board members for their service. This is a great board. It is a high, I want to just mention one other thing. It's a high accountability board. And I really have appreciated that. It's a high-trust board, but it's also very, very much a high accountability board. I think there are, just so the board members know, there are probably times, I don't know, we could ask some principals here, where it's like, wow, that Mr. Corden, he's kind of a high accountability superintendent. We have high expectations. We put them on ourselves. I put this on myself as a superintendent to be reciprocally responsible to the people I serve. This board does the same thing. But it is a high accountability board, and I really appreciate that. You've done a great job, and I am very, very, very thankful as a community member and as a superintendent to work with you. She just said, thank you. All right, next. I'll make this one relatively fast, but it's important for us to take a look at the strat plan, what that means in action. And I often talk about our students and our staff and our board, and I am so thankful for the students that we serve. And we have amazing staff here as well. It's always good to highlight some of the things. I often say I could take 100 examples, and I could. I have a few things tonight that show care, support, and instruction in action. The first picture on the left for you is RHS, our Fine Arts Kiddos. They were submitting some art submissions to Oregon Kay's National Monument. Got kids from Fair Grove that are up at the University of Oregon, visiting the Natural History Museum. Fremont students on the bottom, I love this one. They were practicing their woodworking skills while serving sleep and heavenly peace in providing beds for people in our community that don't have a place to sleep. Awesome. We see it over and over and over again. Thank you to our staff who give our students opportunities to have a meaningful experience in education. So it's wonderful. I want to talk for a few minutes about budget. I do have some messages that will go out to staff and community tomorrow with some information. It's not exactly this information. This slide is a repeat, and I thought it was worth repeating tonight to the board. We looked at this in December, almost the same exact graph. We looked at this in December, almost the same exact graph and slide. So for some context, um, the governor released her budget by law, the first week of December, it needs to be released. She released her budget. Um, as a reminder, budgets at the state level come in a biennium, so in a two-year budget. So the legislative pressure right now from constituents, this includes schools, is pretty significant because all of us need to forecast what our budget, effectively what our life is going to look like, our revenue is going to look like for the next two years. We're concluding the 23, 25 biennium, moving into the 25, 27 biennium. So the governor had three priorities. They were homelessness and housing, mental health, behavioral health, addiction treatment and education. And for the most part, education did, K-12 education did relatively well. Uh, two biennia ago, uh, the 21, 23 biennia, it was nine point, uh, nine point one billion dollars in the biennium for K-12 schools. This year it's a 10.2. And the governor proposed an 11.36 billion dollar biennium budget for education. It was, it was, it was a good budget for us. So I said last time, it's a little bit like a Charles Dickens book of the Tale of Two Cities, right? There's good news and there's bad news. And the thing I want to talk about, and I mentioned this briefly at our last meeting in December, is around the impact, um, of PERS. So, um, let me talk a little bit about this. There is a PERS investment board that works on, um, there are actuaries that work on investments within a PERS fund. Um, one, in late October of last year, so a few months ago, we received notice that, um, there was some bad news with PERS. And effectively the bad news had really two, two kind of tendrils to it. One is that the PERS investments didn't yield the necessary return to keep things level set. That's about 6.9% that that, that fund needs to make. It was a little less than half of that. In addition, there were some pretty significant payroll increases. So I want to thank the business office. We've been working closely together to figure out what does this exactly mean for us next year? What does this mean for, we've got the state budget. There are other things that we're still not exactly sure on. There was a, a ruling about ending rural school funding. There's questions about title funding and what will happen with some federal fundings, funding this month. Some things we don't know about, but as we look at the PERS costs, for us, it will be about $4 million increase for us next year. It's very significant. It's also important to realize there are a little over 900 PERS employers. This is not unique to our school district. It's every school district is a PERS, um, uh, employer, as well as cities, counties, municipalities and others. So you may have heard and will likely continue to hear about PERS costs, increased costs. It's important for our board and our community to know that we have about a $4 million an anticipated, um, deficit next year within PERS. So let's talk a little bit about the work happening behind the scenes on this. So we have done, um, I, I think personally, uh, and it's hard for me to be unbiased, but a pretty commendable job with trying to save for the future, live within our means. Uh, we do have a PERS set aside account. We do have an ending fund balance in our PERS account. We also have an ending fund balance in our state school fund. So we do have some savings. But what is, um, because these costs are, are going to be for two years, uh, one thing I want to be clear about is this, that is that reductions will be necessary even with, uh, ending fund balance, um, that we have, in ending fund balance funds that we do have. We will likely or almost undoubtedly need to make some adjustments in the 25, 26 budget moving forward, in addition to spending some ending, ending fund balance. So here's what we're currently doing. We are and have been, and it's not new. We look at assessing our current programs. We look at our current staffing levels. We look at our strategic plan. Uh, we make sure that things are aligned to that. Um, and we'll start working with our staff and community on updates. Um, it's important for our district to lead and how to do this well. I won't name the district, but there have been more than a few districts who have kind of put this message of panic out. I think we'll see a measure of panic by districts who aren't really paying attention to this. But it's important for me as a superintendent to be upfront, to be transparent, to be honest, that our services to students are probably going to shift a little bit next year. So that's disappointing. And what I will say is there is no, there are no easy things to produce. There isn't, we don't have a spot that is ineffective, that we say, uh, this is going to be easy. So even if we're talking about a $2 million, um, and I don't know if that's the case yet, but if we're looking at a $2 million reduction within current services and a $2 million, for example, uh, ending fund balance, addition to that, to mitigate that money, that would be, it would be impactful. So we're currently in that process of looking at that. You did tonight approve a, uh, budget calendar and will be working diligently to, um, really for me to ask questions, get input, make decisions that will be baked into that calendar moving forward. All right, let me have just two more things to talk about tonight. First, I want to just, uh, remind, um, the community and the board and, um, about our safety and security efforts. Uh, we do have now two, um, deputies, uh, DCSO, uh, Douglas County Sheriff's deputies that are working in all of our schools. Picture is from today, uh, is an event we'll talk about in just a minute. Uh, we have Deputy Spencer Bell, Deputy Dalton McCool, who's been with us. And, um, they will be providing a full-time presence. Now, this is a, a little bit, I don't want to be overdramatic here, but in the past, as in last month, um, there was very little presence of Douglas County Sheriff's Office in our schools. There was a kind of a demarcation where the city, RPD took care of the city and the county took care of the county. And that is not the case anymore. The deputies that we have or will be in all of our schools, they haven't spent much time at the high school. So we have both deputies there right now. Uh, I want to thank Jeff Eichenbush, who's helping with the transition with the two deputies. We also, in addition to the two deputies and Jeff, who serves our district safety coordinator, still have Ryan Laney, um, who is a, a district security officer as well as John Poor. And so it's important that we focus on safety and security. Things will look a little different for the schools that had one county deputy. That would be, uh, Green, Sunny Slope, Melrose and Winchester. But we have these two deputies full-time in our building, providing, um, safety and security support along with our team. Last thing I want to mention is, uh, today we hosted a legislative showcase with our state legislators. We had industry partners there, uh, business leaders, community partners, CTE instructors, students, uh, at RHS today. Want to give a big shout out to Brett Steinecker, who's in the front here. Brett coordinated all this and was great today and kind of leading these efforts today. Um, I'll just, just kind of summarize this. It is, it is a legislative, an important legislative time where there needs to be advocacy around things that work and matter. Uh, I'll give a specific shout out to Representative Osborne, Representative Boyce, who spent some time with us today, about three hours with us today. They were blown away at what is offered in our schools. And it was interesting, these are two representatives that have a good connection to Roseburg. And they said, I have, I had no idea. Students are doing this, I had no idea the programs you're doing. They both walked away and said, this is a model for the state. We need to get other leaders down here, educational, um, particularly people, uh, representatives in legislature to work with Senate and House Education Committee. We'll continue to work on that and share the good news. Their plea was, can you please send some of your people, including students, who did a great job, up to Salem to talk in committee? Sure we can. And can we please send some people down to see what you're doing because we believe it's a model for Oregon? And we said, of course you can. So, um, thank you to everybody involved in all of our programs. Our CTE programs are a model. What we're doing with industry and the college is unique and we believe it is a pathway forward. So, um, thanks to everyone involved in that and who supports that day today. Thank you.
You Superintendent Gordon for that wonderful report, especially the CTE stuff. Yeah. Um, now we're going to move to item seven. Our Board of Education reports, any directors that would, um, care to, um, to speak on anything, we'll start with Director Shirtcliff.
I don't have anything to say that would benefit the children.
Thank you. Director Cubic?
I would just like to note that we had a, actually Superintendent Janet and I had a wonderful Melrose Christmas luncheon. It was a great turnout, happy families. Um, I had great company, of course. And I came home with some new Christmas tree decorations that one of the classes made and they were having a fundraiser. And, uh, it was a wonderful experience and geez, just positive, positive, positive for the community, for the Melrose community.
Thank you.
I thank Jake and Eastwood for hosting us. I know you thanked them earlier, but this is a really cool campus. And, uh, we have some, our school is really nice. They, you know, for the, for the ancient things, they, our staff has done a really good job. This one's just so unique. And, um, if I had young kids, it would be a lot of fun to have them come here. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I just am continually amazed at our kids, our students, what they're doing academically. Um, you know, our robotics teams that are excelling on national levels. You know, and then just to go to the games, the just different kinds of games and to see the talent that the kids have from band to the choir, to just the different things that go on. Um, even our student leaders, our leadership that comes and gives reports, you know, these are kids that are, they've got busy calendars. You know, and a lot of them are prepping for college and, you know, but just, it's very exciting to see and foster and know that, uh, we get to have just a little part in that. And, uh, so I'm very proud of our kids. Um, so I will advise the board that all regular business is finished at this time. And barring any, any objections, I will conclude this meeting. I will say January 22nd is our next meeting at the central office. It will be a board work section, sec, session.